I told her I could cover it. So, and I think that because it's been out there for awhile, that folks have probably had enough time to digest that one, so, yeah, I can cover that one.
Alright, let's go ahead and get started. It is 7:30 on October 25th. Call to order the Common Council meeting. First up is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. Alright, Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, the Constitution of the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, in his name, with all due due justice.
Roll call, please.
Alder Allen?
Present.
Alder Radifrada?
Here.
Alder Gerhardt?
Here.
Alder Herbs?
Here.
Alder Maldonado?
He's not here. I haven't heard from him.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Richardson?
Here.
Alder Strassman?
Here.
Alder Udell?
Here.
Alder Wheeler?
Here.
You have a horn, Mayor.
Alright, thank you. Next up is plug appearances for Nantucket Adams new appointments. We do not have anything right now. I believe I just asked about openings on committees. There is border review opening. The other one, I forget about this, similar to border review. And then there is now another healthy neighborhoods one, who, someone who lives on, I believe it's Forota Road, up in that area. So, not a whole lot of openings right now, but there will be in April, so people can start applying for those if they want. Alright, on to the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Jay. Sentenced by Dave. Anything someone wants to take out and do separately? Seeing none? All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. That's approved. Administrators report.
Good evening, everyone. Few items of note. Absentee, in-person absentee voting began today, here at City Hall, technically in one of the rooms of the community center. However, I do want to at least share the hours, so that folks have that. Today through Friday, October 28th, the hours are 7:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. On Saturday, October 29th, City Hall will be open and staff for in-person absentee voting from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And then Monday, October 31st through November 3rd, City Hall will be open 7:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. for in-person absentee voting. And then we will have one final day on November 4th, available from 7:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Chad, before you move on to, if I can interrupt, Tracy, do you know how many people voted today in person? Off the top of your head?
I do. We had 289 come in today. We were hoping to break the 300 mark, but we only made it to 289.
Alright, thank you. Sorry for interrupting.
Hey, no worries. An update from the Senior Center on their patio fundraiser. They are at $44,000 of their $50,000 goal. Wanted to share and express their appreciation for those who have donated to that project so far. Our interim assessor, Scott Winter, will begin next week on Tuesday. He'll have a period of overlap with Amy Mercer, prior to her last day on November 4th. And our IT Director, Terry Prindo, begins on Monday, October 31st. And will look to begin his orientation and onboarding process next week. And then speaking of October 31st, as we all know, October 31st is the attachment of the Town of Madison, so we are now less than one week away. We are planning a, an event on October 31st at 3:00 p.m., near the intersection of Rimrock Road and East Badger Road. We have, will have our first City of Fitchburg sign with the new population, including the Town of Madison, at 30,999, 30,999. That sign will be unveiled in a short ceremony on, on the 31st at 3:00 p.m. And then one other item of note, two items of note related to the town at this point in time, actually, I'll include three. We're still working through the tax bill situation. Misty, our Finance Director, is continuing to work with the County and the City of Madison on exactly how the tax bills will be handled after the attachment occurs. There is police coverage or assistance being provided by both the Cities of Madison and Fitchburg, beginning today, under a mutual aid agreement with the Town of Madison, so might be seeing some police vehicles in the Town of Madison that will be attached by both municipalities. And then finally, there will be a walk-through with City of Madison staff and City of Fitchburg staff on October 31st during the morning hours of the Town Hall, to assess the equipment that is there, and determine which municipalities have interest in any particular pieces of equipment that are, are there at the Town Hall. And we can begin to do that initial assessment of what may have value and what may not. That covers my list at this point in time. Any questions?
Alright, seeing none, we can, oh, Julia's got one. Go ahead.
Any news about the post office?
Nothing new. I can, I know Mike Zimmerman reached out to the post office after the last inquiry, and I'll see where that's at. I don't recall if he got a response from them or not. So I saw, I was copied on his email to them, so I know it went out. But I'll check in with that.
Alright, seeing nothing else? Do you have a question, Randy?
No, I just want to move something ahead.
Oh.
When you're ready.
Alright, sure. Go for it.
Alright, I'd like to, since we have Deanna Schmidt online, just for time, I'd like to, under Ag and Rural Affairs Committee, I'd like to move that resolution forward. Resolution R-200-22.
Second.
Seconded by a lot of people. Alright, all in favor of moving that up? Say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, nay? Alright, why don't you go ahead and do that one, then?
Okay, very good. I'd like to, motion to approve Resolution R-200-22, approval of the Farmland Preservation Plan Map and Adoption of Dane County Farmland Preservation Plan.
Second.
Alright, sent by Jay. Do you want to explain this one?
Well, that's why Deanna's available, so I'd like to turn it over to her.
Go ahead, Deanna.
Good evening. So Dane County is required by the State of Wisconsin to have a certified farmland preservation plan. In 2012, the City of Fitchburg did a farmland preservation plan, and it was updated in 2014. And that was adopted under Dane County's farmland preservation plan. This year, Dane County needs to go forward to recertified their farmland preservation plan. And so what's happening here is, city staff is working closely with Dane County Planning Staff to update our farmland preservation map, which is before you. And then we're bringing forward Dane County's farmland preservation plan, so that Fitchburg's map and Dane County's farmland preservation plan could be adopted by Fitchburg, and that will enable Fitchburg farmers to have the opportunity to participate in the farmland tax credit program. So, like I said, we've been working closely with Dane County Planning Staff, and then the Ag and Rural Committee. And Ag and Rural has approved this approach, and so has the Planning Commission. I'm here to answer any questions.
Alright, yeah, that was one of the questions, if Ag and Rural and Planning Commission approved, and they both did. Any questions, comments at all? Gabrielle?
So, I mean, is there any, like, particular changes or highlights of the map or the plan that you could highlight for us? I, you know, I haven't been able to follow this process very closely, so I'm just curious from a, you know, public education standpoint.
Yeah, go ahead, Deanna.
Of course. There's very, very few changes to the map. The changes that did occur reflected the expansion of the urban service area that brought in Fahy Fields, that whole new subdivision that brought in the Edgewood Campus, the proposed campus. So, the majority of the changes to the farmland preservation map removed those acreages out of the farmland preservation area. The map actually has two different areas, the areas that are in farmland preservation and the areas that are not. So, because of the expansion of the new subdivisions and Edgewood College, we lost some acreage in the farmland preservation area.
Julia?
Yes, I have a question about, you know, if I look at the map, there is the blue lines with the future growth boundary, so, and there are some farmland inside those blue section. Doesn't mean that those line eventually in the future can be converted to, you know, to, I don't know, remove from the farmland inventory to, for other purpose?
Of course, yes. So, the blue lines are the future urban development areas, our FUDAs. And the, the areas that are currently farmland preservation, once the urban service area would expand, we would have the new neighborhood development plans in place, then those would not, those would no longer be farmland preservation areas. But for the time being, keeping those areas in the farmland preservation area allows those farmers to take advantage of the state's tax credit program and other services for farmland preservation, at least for the time being. Thank you.
Alright, seeing nothing else, we can go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, nay? Alright, that's approved, and now we can go back to Planning Commission items, since Deanna's with us. If she, there's anything on there that she wants to hang out for, you can go back to Planning Commission now, Randy.
Very good. Let's start with the first item, then. Motion to approve Ordinance 2022-O-37, which is RZ-2479-22, zoning ordinance amendment granting specific implementation plan zoning for request, RZ-2479-22 by Chris Armstrong, agent for Fitchburg Technology Campus LLC, to rezone property from PDDGIP Plan Development District, General Implementation Plan, to PDDSIP Plan Development District, Specific Implementation Plan, located at 2605 Research Park Drive.
Second.
Sent by Jay, and did Planning Commission approve?
Planning Commission approved, yes.
And you want to explain this one?
Sure, it's pretty simple, straightforward. The applicant proposes, is proposing to develop a children's developmental daycare facility at 2605 Research Park Drive.
There's a big demand in the city for more childcare options.
Yeah, and I think especially in that area, especially with the high tech and businesses and residential area to the north, there's a big demand.
Alright, I don't see any other questions or comments. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay? That's approved. Next one.
Okay, the next two items relate, so I'll speak to both, and of course, we'll, we'll vote separately, but first one is motion to approve Ordinance 2022-O-36, formerly RZ-2478-22, zoning ordinance amendment approving rezoned request, RZ-2478-22 by Jim Lees, agent for Mary Jo Lees Living Revocable Trust, to rezone tracts of land from AX Exclusive Agricultural to AS Small Lot Agricultural to RR Rural Residential on property associated at 1861 Schuster Road.
Second.
Sent by Jay, did Planning Commission approve?
Planning Commission approved.
At Ag and Rural Affairs?
Ag and Rural approved.
Alright, and what's this about?
Well, the applicant is requesting to separate the existing farm structures from farmed acreage. This farm is identified as base farm of 122 Mary Jo Lees, under the city's rural development requirements. And the total of 76 acres allows for two development claims. To date, there's no, no claims have been used, and two claims remain. The applicant would assign the two lots to Lot 2. No additional buildable lots would be created at this time.
Alright.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with this. I just wanted to point out that in the future, I think it would make more sense to do the land division before we do the rezoning. The land division is the next item on the agenda, but just so that things make logical sense, because we're rezoning a piece of land that hasn't been created yet, so.
Sure, and I'm just following what's, yeah.
See Deanna write notes down.
Yeah.
Alright, anything else? Alright, seeing nothing else, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay? That is approved. Next one, Randy?
Alright, the next one is the certified map, and motion to approve Resolution R-206-22, formerly CS-2477-22, approving certified survey map request by Jim Lees, agent for Mary Jo Lees Living Revocable Trust, to approve a certified survey map to create three lots out of three existing lots located with 1861 Schuster Road.
Second.
Sent by Jay, did Planning Commission approve?
Planning Commission approved.
And Ag and Rural Affairs?
Ag and Rural Affairs approved as well.
And this is really the same thing you just talked about, just the, what?
Correct.
The first step, even though we're approving it second?
That's correct.
Alright, any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay? Alright, that's approved. Next one.
Okay, the next one is a certified survey map as well, but motion to approve Resolution R-207-22, sir, CS-2475-2, approving certified survey map request by Justin Zampardi, agent for Green Tech Land Company LLC, to approve a CSM to subdivide an outlot off the existing lot for access purposes at 5126 Lacy Road.
Second.
Sent by Dave, did Planning Commission approve?
Plan Commission approved, yes.
And what's this one about?
Avanti Properties is proposing to create an outlot, outlot in Lot 64 of the 6th Edition Nine Springs. The outlot would be reserved for private alley purposes. The CSM would also grant an access easement at the rear of the lot. They're also proposing to develop lot, the lot as 59 multifamily units, so the review of the proposed multifamily development would fall under the Smart Code Administrative Article.
It's the last one in the series of lots there. It's, I guess it'd be the first one from around about, if you go past the Limerick and, that's a new Lacy.
Right.
Which, you knew it was going to be an apartment. Jay, do you have a question?
Yeah, well, these are going to be my new neighbors. But the question I have is, this outlot looks like part of it is in the current 5122 lot. So, I'm, was that already divided off as an outlot, or, because this is only referring to the 5126 lot?
Deanna, do you?
Do you know?
No? Or have it in front of you?
I'm a little confused. I know that he's just working, the, the land division, the CSM just covers Lot 64, and they're creating an outlot within Lot 64, so I'm a little confused with Jay's question. Sorry.
Well, what's showing on the certified survey map is Lot 1 and outlot, and an outlot, Outlot 40 they're calling it. Oh, you're, I see. Never mind.
It's all within.
Forget the question that I was asking.
Alright.
I have no idea what I'm talking about.
Alright, anything else? Seeing nothing else, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay? That one's approved. Next one.
Okay, so the next three ordinance all relate. We'll, I'll speak to all three, and then of course, we'll vote separately. Motion to approve Ordinance 2022-O-32, zoning ordinance amendment to assign zoning to Town of Madison properties generally located west of Fishhatry Road, southwest of Beltline Highway, east of Bryant Road, and north of Greenway Cross, from now on referred to as the Zimbrick Area.
Second.
Sent by Jay, did Planning Commission approve?
Plan Commission approved, yes.
And you want to explain these next three?
Uh, yeah. The Plan Commission held a public hearing back in September for the three ordinances, and at the time, the Plan Commission did not take a vote. Council approved on September 27th. The final attachment of the portions of the Town and City of Madison accruing to Fitchburg, the Town of Madison land is currently zoned under Dane County zoning ordinance, so the Genesis parcel, which we'll speak to next, is zoned under the City of Madison zoning ordinance, and then each parcel must be assigned to the City of Fitchburg zoning district as part of the attachment. So, this will all take place October 30th.
I know we talked a little bit about Planning Commission, is that this is a little bit redundant. We did this kind of, you know, last meeting or meeting before that, but we want to make sure that if there were any questions or issues that people had, that they had plenty of opportunity to come in and get those answered, and make sure that we took care of any concerns people had. But, good news is that people don't have questions and concerns, so must be done well.
I have a question.
Yeah, Julia?
So, the last meeting, we vote something referring those three areas. What it was, it was different like this? What is the difference?
Yeah, I think it's, go ahead, Chad.
I believe that was the wards for voting.
Oh, okay, okay.
Dave, do you have a question?
Yeah, the, when we previously approved, we had the, we'll call it the meets and bounds, you know, we had the, and, and these, are they, should they be in these ordinance, or these documents also? I don't, I'm kind of ignorant of this, so.
Yeah, I think, Deanna, do you want to just, I think one is, go ahead, Deanna, I don't want to speak out of turn. I want to speak.
Yeah, really, what, what we're doing here is, with these three ordinances, is adopting a zoning map, and that map is tied to particular parcels, which staff has taken the access Dane parcel information with addresses, home, property owners, and the numbers, the, the parcel numbers, and assigned to zoning districts. So essentially, what, what we're asking you to do this evening is to just assign those zoning districts based on our map.
Thank you.
Anything else? Alright, Jay?
Just one question that's going to basically apply to all these. At a previous meeting, I had asked about what was going to happen with conditional uses on, on the existing parcels. And I don't, I don't know if there are any, but have we reviewed all that? Because it doesn't appear that we are doing anything with any possible conditional uses that might exist.
Go ahead, Deanna.
I can speak to that also. So, we have requested the data from Dane County. They, they managed the zoning for the town, and there's actually two conditional uses. One is for Zimbrick, in terms of their auto repair that dates back to the 1990s, and the second one is for a gas station. So, currently, there are only two active conditional uses in the Town of Madison parcels that we will be attaching. Those conditional uses will continue to remain in effect, and we will continue to honor those.
Do we need to go, I, I guess I would prefer that we go through a process to just bring those in and approve them, so that it's part of our, our, part of our zoning code with those, with those particular parcels.
I think we didn't, just because we can't say no to them. Like, I think we have to take those on. We can't just tell them, well, too bad, now you're in Fitchburg, and your conditional use doesn't work.
Well, that's, that's probably true, but I think, I think we should still do something to recognize that we understand these are conditional uses, instead of it just being assumed.
And I'm sure Deanna can touch base with Valerie as well, and figure out what, it's a very unique situation, obviously. See what she would recommend, so.
We can do that.
Alright, anything else? Alright, then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay? That one's approved. Next one, Randy?
Alright, next one. Motion to approve Ordinance 2022-O-33, zoning ordinance amendment to assign zoning to property owned by Patrick Henry, Second LLC, located at 313 West Beltline Highway.
Second.
From now on referred to as the Genesis Parcel.
Seconded by Jay, did Planning Commission approve?
Plan Commission approved, yes.
Alright, and this is kind of same thing, just one of the other parcels, they're dividing into three areas. So I don't think there's any other questions, and I, oh, Dave, you have a.
Why does it show Planning Commission twice?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Well, I, I didn't know if it was another, something, another.
There's only one Planning Commission, like it should have been Parks or Public Works or something. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was on Planning Commission, consecutive ones with no action the first one.
Yeah. Alright, seeing nothing else, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay? That one's approved, and last one, Randy?
The third one. Motion to approve Ordinance 2022-O-34, zoning ordinance amendment to assign zoning to Town of Madison properties generally located west of Rimrock, south of West Beltline Highway, east of Highway 14, and north of Matt Maloney Drive, from now on referred to as the Southdale Area.
Second.
Sent by Dave, and Planning Commission approved this one, too?
Yes, Plan Commission approved.
Alright, any further questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay? Alright, that's approved. Before we go to Public Works, Randy, would you like to also move forward the last item for Deanna, which is at the very, close to the end of the agenda, anyway? I think it is, yeah, actually is the last kind of official one. New Business A3?
Alright, let me find my... This is under...
New Business.
New Business, Deanna, new committee, new business.
I can make my way here.
New Business Direct Referrals. Alright, yes, I'd like to motion that we move forward Resolution R-20-22? Is that what you're referencing?
Yep.
That's the levy limit adjustment.
No, no, 20039. It's the very last.
My apologies. Item 3, then. Alright. Well, then I would like to, motion we move forward Ordinance 2022-O-39.
Second.
Alright, sent by Gabrielle, and do you want to speak to this, or do you want Deanna or Chad?
No, since we moved it forward, should I motion to approve, then?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. That was just to change the agenda, sorry. All in favor of moving up that on the agenda, say aye.
Second.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay?
I'm in the wrong world tonight.
Alright, so now we're going to do this one next. Now, can you do a motion to approve?
Okay. Alright, motion to approve Ordinance 2022-O-39, amending the legal descriptions of the final attachment of the Town of Madison as described in ordinances 2022-O-28 and 2022-O-30, and amending the legal description of the city boundary as described in ordinance 2022-O-31 by amending Chapter 2, City Boundaries, Wards, Aldermanic, Districts, and Elections.
Second.
Sent by Jay, do you know what this is about?
No, I'm going to have, I do, but because of the complexity, we're going to have Deanna speak to it, so.
Alright, Deanna, go ahead.
Okay, so, what's happening here at the, this, these, this ordinance just amends those legal descriptions from the attachments. On last month, when the three ordinance came forward to do the attachments, Alder, Alder Allen asked staff to take another look at those legal descriptions, which we did, and unfortunately, found two small errors. And so, this ordinance will amend those two small errors in those legal descriptions from the attachments. The first error was on the Zimbrick area. The, the Frontage Road belongs to Fitchburg, and unfortunately, in the first ordinance, the frontage area, the frontage road was not in the attachment area. So, we're making a change to that legal description to ensure that the frontage road is included in Fitchburg's area, becomes part of Fitchburg. The second error that we found was at the Rimrock, Rimrock Road, the eastern boundary of the Southdale Area. We had it drawn... We had it drawn in the first ordinance, um, at the eastern right of way line. That was incorrect, it belongs on the center line of Rimrock Road. So this ordinance, um, brings forward those whole very long, very detailed, um, legal descriptions um, and makes those two changes. This does not change the word boundaries or, um, any, any other major issues here. It's just making those amendments to those legal descriptions.
All right, any questions, Julia?
I have a question in the, um, in the, um, if I am looking at the ordinance document, the first page in the third where it is, it, it doesn't mention the Genesis area. It mentioned that, you know, the Zimbrick area and the Southdale area shall be detached from the town of Madison and attached to the city of Fitchburg. Do we need to do something with the Genesis area, yeah, area? Because that one is detached from Madison to Fitchburg or is already, that language is already incorporated in the amendment, not in the, what we approved last month?
You're gonna separate.
Yeah, so, okay, so we, okay, I want to be sure of that.
I'll let Deanna speak to it, but I think I know the answer, go ahead, Deanna.
We, we had that ordinance right, so we don't have to make any changes to the Genesis parcel.
Okay, okay. If the line is center of Rimrock Road, does that mean we share jurisdiction of the road with Madison?
Correct, yep, yeah, they own half and we own half when we redo it.
Do we have any other roads in this, in this?
Oh, yeah, lots of.
Okay, okay.
Fitzro- Fitzro- Road would be the best example.
So it's always gonna be a problem, okay, great, thanks.
Yep. Anything else? All right, seeing nothing else, then we can go ahead and vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, nay? All right, that is approved, thank you, Deanna, I think that's all your things now. All right, now that the, the portion is done, before we do Public Works, I know Wendy's on the line. Jay, do you want to move up the library board?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to, uh, move up, uh, library board, resolution R one eighty-five dash twenty-two, requesting exemption from county library tax.
Second.
Sent by Gabriella, all in favor of moving the library board one to now on the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay? All right, so we're doing library resolution now and do.
Mr. Mayor, I would move approval of resolution R one eighty-five dash twenty-two, requesting exemption from Dane County library tax.
Second.
Sent by Randy, did library board approve?
Yes, oh, yes, yes.
Finance approved?
Finance approved.
All right, do you want to explain this, Jay, or you want Wendy to, or?
Uh, well, I mean, I can give you a brief overview, but Wendy can be more exhaustive.
Um, so this is just kind of standard procedure, um, for us every year. Uh, we do not have to pay the library tax because we are providing, um, sufficient library service ourselves. Um, the last time we paid the library tax was in two thousand and ten before we opened and it was close to a million dollars then, so this is a good thing.
All right, I like good things, any questions? All right, seeing none, then we can go ahead and vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay? All right, that is approved, thank you. And we also have Chief Morales on the phone or on the line here. I believe he's here for the approval for squad lease buyouts, I would guess. So, uh, so finance one, Randy, uh, put you on the spot here, do you want to move that one up to the next item on the agenda?
Yeah, so I'd like to, uh, motion to move, uh, resolution R dash one nine seven dash two two forward.
Second.
Sent by Gabriella, all in favor of, uh, moving the squad lease buyouts to now on the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay? All right, so you can go ahead and do a motion now, Randy.
All right, motion to approve resolution R dash one nine seven dash two two, approval for squad lease buyouts.
Second.
Sent by Jay, and did, uh, let's see, did finance approve?
Finance approved, yes.
All right, and you want to speak to this or you want Chief to?
Well, since we moved it up and the chief is here, we're gonna have him speak to it.
All right, chief.
But otherwise, I will.
Hello, everyone, and, and thank you for, uh, putting all of us up here in, uh, on the front. Um, the, uh, I guess there was a time that the Fitchburg Police Department, uh, leased squads. We had four squads leased that, uh, our last four squads leased that expired August first, twenty twenty-two. Uh, we are now purchasing our squads and, uh, moving forward, that's, uh, the method we're gonna use in bringing in new squads. The four, uh, that leases that expired, the buyout cost for these squads is, uh, thirty-three thousand, three hundred and forty-two, which includes the title and license fees. Uh, these squads will be kept in use for a longer period of time and have been accounted for within our future vehicle replacement account in the C I P. So, uh, basically, uh, we'll be able to own these vehicles, uh, for a longer period of time. The new vehicles that we're purchasing, we're pu- purchased, we're also planning on keeping those. And I believe, and, uh, Chad, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but after their, uh, use from, uh, the Fitchburg Police Department, I think we can, uh, move those through other areas within the, uh, city, uh, government, uh, for longer use.
Yep, that is the plan, actually. It's one of the many great things about doing this is now other departments can use these once they're no longer being used by the police department. All right, questions, Jay?
So, um, I know one of the things that, uh, what, that had, one of the reasons we went with leasing instead of, um, purchasing many years ago was because, uh, we would get maintenance plans that were done with the local dealers like oil changes and stuff like that. Are we able to do that in-house now or will we still be looking at outside vendors?
I, I believe we're still gonna be looking at outside vendors to get those oil changes, uh.
All right, and, uh, these are, what, three years old now? So how many, how many miles are there on a three-year-old squad car typically?
Uh, I'd have to get, uh, look at those to give you an exact, uh, mileage on there. But I believe we're using them for, they average about fifty thousand miles after about three years, on average.
Chad may have a guess as well.
I, I didn't hear what you had said, chief, so I don't want to be too.
I, I believe, I didn't check that, I don't have an exact number, you might have one better than me, but just through experience, they go through about fifty thousand miles after about three years.
Yeah, I, I know that we've also had some that have probably been closer to ninety to a hundred at that point in time. So obviously it just depends on, uh, where they've been in the rotation. And I will just also add, uh, Alder Allen, in regards to your maintenance question, uh, uh, prior to assuming this role, I had started to engage in some conversations with our highway maintenance, uh, crew and their ability to potentially take on routine maintenance. Um, I think there's an interest there, a mutual interest, uh, although I don't want to speak for Chief Morales on that. But, uh, right now it's a capacity issue, uh, for ours current mechanic to be able to take on the, the maintenance on the police, uh, front, but we certainly think there's the potential for some, some savings there.
I want to stand corrected, I think you are correct more on the ninety thousand miles. I'm thinking of, uh, the average, uh, transfer at around four hundred, about four years and, uh, such miles where they recommend replacement. And yes, if there were, uh, if there were staffing for the D P W, we'd prefer to have our maintenance services to do the oil changes, I would prefer to do that. But, uh, as Chad said, stated, I think there's capacity issues there as we speak.
Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing nothing else, we can go ahead and vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay? All right, that is approved, thank you, chief. All right, now we can go to Public Works, Dave.
I'll move approval, resolution R one ninety-six twenty-two, approving the first amendment to the library chiller design and construction services contract.
Second.
Sent by Gabriella, I guess, and did Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
Did finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right, and what's this one about, Dave?
So as you know, the, we've been limping along, uh, with the chiller at the library for some time. Uh, as, as you, as you heard, um, library directors indicate, you know, went in in two thousand and ten and really didn't get a full lifetime, what we did, we'd expect. They did analysis, you know, board, or, uh, engineering did analysis with the library and, I don't know if it was a, um, I don't know if it was a design, but there wasn't enough redundancy in there and, and one of the units was running pretty much steady, never got offloaded. And that led to the accelerated, uh, um, accelerated, um, death of it, I guess, if you want to call it. So, um, before just, before deciding to just replace it with another one, same way, they evaluated it and, uh, you know, we've purchased a chiller, but we, um, there'll be additional piping, piping and work that's, needs to be engineered and put in to allow, allow it to get a longer lifetime out of the new system we're, we're, we're putting in and, and, um, so that's what this is about, this, you know, for this amendment, for that additional engineering services and construction, um, construction support, you know, for this, for this part. It's not just a like-for-like, uh, replacement, there, there's engineering, engineering involved, engineering and construction involved to change, change the process to get a, hopefully, you know, fifteen to twenty-year life out of, out of this unit.
All right, Jay?
Yeah, what's the status of the other chiller units?
At, at the library?
Yeah.
I.
I can answer.
Jay, go ahead.
They are currently functional, um, but there's no redundancy, as Dave had mentioned. A couple of the, um, the compressors have had to be replaced, uh, multiple times already. And, uh, the system, in my understanding, when it was first installed, was a bit on the proprietary side. And, um, apparently has not functioned as we were informed it would function. So this, uh, this is actually a very, very long process. The city's been working with an engineering firm to design a replacement system, uh, for quite some time. And we know that the lead time in order to order the materials and actually have them installed is likely going to put us into next spring. So, um, we're trying to be pro- as proactive as possible to avoid a catastrophic situation where there would be no heating and cooling in the library and we would have to close it.
Well, I g- I guess what I was really driving at is, um, i- is this, whatever we're doing right now, and I, I know we've talked about it in the library board and I, I haven't been involved with the public works process, but is this going to create a more permanent solution for the entire system? Or is this just dealing with the one unit that's not working right now?
This is entirely new system that'll be going in, so everything that's in there existing is coming out.
Okay, so the existing units are, are, the existing units are going away too, it's just gonna be a whole new.
Correct, yep, yep, this is a full replacement.
Groovy.
Dave?
I just add, we're, we're using ARPA funding for, for, for some of this. Very happy to hear that it met the requirements.
All right, anyone else? Seeing nothing else, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay? That's approved, next one, Dave.
Move approval, resolution R one ninety-eight twenty-two, setting the twenty twenty-three solid waste collection rates.
Second.
Sent by Jay, did Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
Did finance approve?
Finance approved.
Did R C C talk about this?
We, it wasn't on the agenda in, in the right order for us to actually fall on it. We did discuss it though.
All right, uh, do you want to speak to this, Dave?
I'd speak a little bit, you know, our, um, like every, like everything, you know, with, um, is going up in prices, we're gonna go from approximately two sixteen a year to, uh, two twenty-eight or two twenty-nine a year will be the, will be the increase, roughly three percent. Um, you know, I wish it didn't happen, but it seems like a reasonable rate. And, you know, my polling of, of residents would indicate, you know, a more favorable approval of our solid waste collection system that they would, you know, they would feel this would be justified.
All right, I can open up the questions, comments, Julia?
So, uh, David, um, I am looking at the unit from twenty twenty-three, so does include the, the town of Madison? All the new, you know, units that we are required here?
Um, you know, I, I'm, I'm not up to speed as much as I'd like. I'm, I'm assuming that, uh, we're gonna have to provide, provide units to the town of Madison like the, our residents do here. Is that, is that your question?
Yeah, there is an increase in the unit, but I don't know because it's, we have new neighborhood or because also we also incorporating the town of Madison.
Well, I think we've had a, you know, growth, growth in, in, you know, homes that would be reflected in that. And I'm not, I don't, I can't speak specifically to town of Madison, you know, the, what the arrangement is there, uh, if they're under this or not, I, I'm.
Yeah, so the town of Madison, obviously, we will begin, uh, providing solid waste collection services to the single-family and or, um, two-unit residences as we typically would as by ordinance with the city of Fitchburg. Uh, I believe that our ordinance states that a, a property with four or more units is required to have dumpster service. So, uh, this would obviously incorporate the, uh, the town in this as well. If my recollection is correct, there's approximately a dozen single-family residences in, uh, in the Southdale neighborhood.
Jay?
Yeah, that was going to be my comment, there's, there's thirteen, uh, single-family lots in the, um, in the Southdale neighborhood. All of those are accessed through roads that we, that our trucks currently go dri- that's the, so it's not a big diversion, it's just the addition of thirteen units. Everything else is either commercial or multifamily and those, those are required to have private, uh, garbage collection, which we don't get involved with at all. So it's, the, it's not going to be a, a huge increase to our, um, waste collection from Southdale.
Anyway, Gabriella?
Yeah, I think I mentioned this in my last R C C report, but I just wanted to communicate again what the discussion was in R C C about this. There was a, a really strong opposition to increasing it this much, just given the, the steady every year increases. And obviously, I, you know, we all know that's because of the increased costs passed through from Pelletary. But just like looking back to twenty nineteen, the unit charge was one sixty-two. If we pass this, it's gonna be two twenty-eight and that's a forty percent increase since twenty nineteen. You know, and that's higher than inflation, so, you know, it, there are a lot of mitigating circumstances around that. Um, but I just, it's a lot, it's a huge increase. Um, I think this particular year, um, my understanding is that this is a six percent increase over last year, which is actually lower than the percent increase from Pelletary. So the, the Pelletary cost increase was nine percent, that's my understanding. And obviously inflation is high right now, so six percent, nine percent is, is pretty close to what you would consider with, with inflation. But R C C, um, did kind of an informal vote to recommend two hundred and twenty-two dollars, um, at, which would require dipping into the fund balance even more. Misty also commented on, on finance about just, you know, the difficulty in trying to balance using a fund balance, which we are doing with this, with this resolution versus, you know, increase in costs. So anyway, I just wanted to point it out that R C C felt, felt very strongly about this. Um, I'm not sure if I personally agree because I, I do think that it's something that we have to do, but I think we just need to also acknowledge that it's gone up forty percent since twenty nineteen and that's a lot. And I don't know if we need to start looking at reducing some of the benefits from Pelletary so that we can continue, stop this like wild increase. Or I, I just think we need to start looking at that from a, a step back on a broader perspective instead of a year-by-year perspective. Um, and I know I've talked about the cardboard recycling drop-offs and how that has increased with a day, almost daily pickup. That's obviously contributing to costs. I just think we really need to look at this, um, going into future years. And I know that Ben, our environmental engineer, is very aware of that from R C C, but I wanted to put that out there to the council for, um, just for a comment. But if anyone wants to discuss it, we, we could have a discussion too, thanks.
All right, Julia and Dave, go ahead.
So my question is, uh, I think also the increase, uh, in fees associated with the increase in how the city's growing too and the amount of volume that we are getting too, you know what I mean? So that seems that we cannot control, you know, as the city's incorporating more neighborhood, more units, you know, the cost, I think part of the cost is associated with the growth and the volume too. So, you know what I mean, so.
Dave, go ahead.
Um, I'm not sure how long the, the contract is, but, um, is, you know, Chad, is it three years?
I think it's typically a three-year contract, yes.
This is, you know, we're, we're gonna let them know we're, we're going out for bids, you know, as soon as, um, as soon as this is up, you know, that, just, just knowing that you're, you're gonna have to have a sharper pencil. Um, times will, will drive some improvements. Maybe Gabriella, you want to consider again, maybe, maybe we, uh, survey, survey our residents again. Um, you know, the, I don't want, I don't want to spend ten thousand dollars on a survey, but, um, survey our residents, see what their thoughts are, you know, um, you know, seeing the increased costs. Are you interested in less services, are you willing to pay for more services? I, my sense is you kind of get nebulous results. more services? My sense is you kind of get nebulous results when we've done this in the past, but it might be worth, might be worth, worth, worth doing.
I believe we've done that in the past.
Yeah.
I'm sure we'll do that again, which the next year might be the last year of the three years.
I think it may be.
So it'd be in the next year that we start doing that. Jay?
Yeah, one of the challenges we will be up against is that there just aren't a lot of providers for this service anymore. You know, years ago, we always had two or three bids. And they were used, there was Pelletary, there was Waste Management, there was Green Valley, those were the three. I don't think Green Valley even exists anymore. And Waste Management doesn't really do this kind of collection. They don't have the infrastructure for it. So I, I would be the most stunned man in America if we get more than one bid, when we send it out for bids. But there, we probably should consider other ways to put pressure on them. And, you know, something that we talked about long ago is that at some point, we're going to be big enough and have enough stuff going on that we can provide our own service, like Madison does, and a couple of other municipalities. I don't know when that's gonna happen. It may not be the time yet, but we probably should put them, put Pelletary on notice, that this is something we're gonna be looking at. And as soon as we can make it happen, we're gonna do it. And, because they've got a lot of infrastructure invested in this also. And, but they need to make it worthwhile for us to continue looking to them as the provider.
I think we'd also want to be careful about sounding too threatening if they're the only person we can get the service from, because then they might say, oh, well, we'll just make sure we make all our money in the next three years, and...
Well, I mean, you know, there are different business strategies, certainly.
All right. Gabriella?
And, and just to clarify my comments, I, you know, I do, I actually do think Pelletary is a great service. And I know people value recycling in the city, which is something I appreciate. But I do wonder if there is some sort of service that they're providing that, that we could compromise on, like the unlimited curbside. That's great. But how many people are actually using unlimited curbside? You know, like, are there, are there certain cuts that we can make that, or maybe we need to increase enforcement at the, at the recycling site? Maybe we need to really increase fines, and so that people that are using it that are not living in Pittsburgh, maybe they need to pay a bigger fine, which could help fund the, the recycling service. I don't know what it is, but there just has to be a, and I, I think Pelletary overall has been a good partner, but I just, they're just, we have to find some way to, to try to, you know, stop this, this increase. And so we'll definitely be talking about it in RCC, but I, you know, it sounds like the council generally agrees with that. So there's gotta be a balance. I'm, I'm an environmentalist, but you know, there's gotta be a balance.
Do you, do you know how much they are increasing the fee to other municipality? Because we are all, all using the same vendor, so, no?
No. All right. Seeing nothing else, then we go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay? That is approved. Next one, Dave?
Move approval, resolution R.20122, intergovernmental agreement for the ownership, operation, maintenance of the Badger Lane lift station.
Second.
Sent by Jay, the Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
The Finance approve?
Finance approved.
And what's this one about, Dave?
This portion of the town of Madison is served by a sewage lift station. We, this will be the second one we have. Terravessa has one. Wasn't planned, it ended up that way. This area has to have a sewage lift, lift station to get it into the Madison, the Metropolitan Sewage District Interceptor. There's operations, maintenance costs associated with this. And eventually, there'll be replacement costs. But there's yearly maintenance and electricity costs, and this portions, what we're gonna pay versus the city of Madison that also has residents, you know, that are, are connected to this, this area. So basically, a cost, cost sharing, we're at approximately 49% of this. And the fear, the fear is, you know, it's gonna be, have to, have to be replaced not too distant future. And I'll just add, it doesn't have to be decided tonight, but I feel strongly, you know, the area is served by these, there should be a special fee that they, that area pays, rather than the rest of the, rest of the ratepayers having to, to pick that, pick that up. I, I pushed for the same thing at Terravessa, that they have to pay for the maintenance and future replacement, you know, of that station. And I'd like a similar agreement, you know, for this one, but that doesn't have to be decided tonight. But this lays out what we're gonna pay, and puts us on the hook for future, future half of replacement of this lift station.
All right. Any questions or comments at all? Seeing none, we go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay? That is approved. Anything else to go after Vote Works?
No.
All right, Park Commission?
No report.
All right. Anything else on Library Board?
Yeah, we had our meeting last week. There was a discussion about something that is on this piece of paper that I'm trying to find. Uh, well, I can't find it right now. But we had, we did have a discussion about the use policy and a couple of other things. There's a, there's a, a couple of policies that are still being reviewed by the city attorney. And I think those are just gonna be approved by the library board, but I will let you know as soon as we get done with them.
All right. Thank you. Commission, anything else?
Uh, you heard from Chad, you know, the success of the fundraising. Jill is, Jill is going to be asking engineering to get the bid ready for that. You know, I, I don't, I don't see any issues with us hitting that, hitting that goal. So she's gonna try to get that ball rolling. And at our last meeting, we just, we had a few, if you want to call them ordinances, or, or rules that we kind of clarified for, for usage of the facility. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. RCC?
Uh, we had the recycling event a couple of weekends ago. I don't have the numbers yet, but hopefully we'll have them next week. But otherwise, we hadn't met since the last council meeting, so no, no additional report.
All right. What about TTC?
We did not meet this month, and we do not currently have a transmission engineer. So I'm not sure when the next time we'll meet, but I'll let you know then.
All right. Seda?
Next meeting is October 27th, 7:00 a.m.
All right. Anything else in agro-neuro affairs?
Uh, no. We met last Tuesday, the 18th, and everything that we addressed that evening, we've addressed this evening.
All right. What about EMS?
Um, can we, is it possible to move this resolution up for EMS?
Which...
It's...
Oh, the...
Resolution R.202-22.
Sure.
Are, are you addressing it, or is it Finance?
Is it Finance then?
It is under Finance.
That's all right.
Oh, that's fine. I mean, Chad's actually gonna talk about it, so, but...
Yes, no, he is. So I wasn't sure if, okay.
I mean, I figure we might as well have...
Just not staff here. That's the only reason I didn't move it up, but we can.
Sure.
Second.
Okay.
Chan, you made a motion to move it up?
Yes, thanks.
All right, sent by Jay?
[laughing]
All right. So all in favor of moving up directory referral, A1, to now, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay? All right. Now, do you want to do a motion on your...
Sure. Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion on resolution, R.202-22, support, supporting the levy limit adjustment for the increase of the joint EMS district assessed charge finance.
Second.
And that was a motion to approve, right?
Yep.
All right. Sent by Jay, and did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right. And then, Chan, who's gonna talk about this? Chad? All right, Chad, go ahead.
So I'll keep my comments brief. This information has all, all been shared with the council several weeks ago and talked about at a couple of different occasions. But ultimately, for those listening at home, state statute does allow municipalities served by a fire, a joint fire or joint EMS district, to have a levy limit adjustment made when certain criteria are met. One of those criteria allows us to utilize the CPI plus 2% to make this calculation for the levy limit adjustment. This is one of the only items in which, at least I personally can identify, in which the current high inflation provides some benefit to the municipality. And in this particular case, because CPI has been identified at 7.7%, 2% on top of that, it equates to a 9.7% adjustment in our levy that could be taken. This, ultimately, what we've, what, what has happened here is, in addition to this potential resolution being passed here tonight, at the annual meeting of the EMS commission, last week on Thursday, there was a special meeting held in advance of that, in which the commission voted to amend the recommended commission budget to allow the three municipalities to fully realize this particular adjustment by increasing the amount of money budgeted to replenish the reserve fund that, as you will recall, had been reduced due to an accounting error a couple, I think it was, I think it was last budget. So the final piece of this is that all three municipalities in this case, served by the joint EMS district, must adopt a resolution in favor of exceeding the limit. That does not require all of the municipalities to take that levy limit adjustment, but all municipalities are required to, to pass a resolution in order for any of the municipalities to take that adjustment. In our particular case, the adjustment that would be, we will be allotted is about $95,000 to our levy. So it is a notable amount, and that carries on basically for, forever. The city of Verona has already passed the resolution at their first council meeting in October. It's my understanding that they do intend to take the levy limit adjustment, from my conversations with their administration. We have also met with the town of Verona administration. They intend to take the resolution up at their meeting next Tuesday on November 1st. And it's my understanding that, that they, it seems that they are likely to pass the resolution as well. So this is, again, one of the, the few, if only benefit to the high CPI that we're all currently experiencing. It does allow us to take a notable levy limit adjustment, and also helps to replenish the fit Verona EMS cash reserves more quickly than was currently planned.
And Chad, would it also be accurate to say that we have already put that levy limit adjustment in the budget? And so if we didn't pass this, we'd have to probably make some cuts to our budget?
Uh, that is correct. That was identified in the mayor's proposed budget, that this was one of the levy limit strategies that was proposed to, to fully fund the, the items included in that budget. So yes, you are correct, Mayor, that if this did not pass, we would have to make adjustments to the proposed budget.
Jay?
Um, I realize we're in a period of very high inflation right now, which is not likely to continue forever. And it's possible that when things settle down a little bit, that prices might actually decrease, and we could see a negative CPI, maybe for a couple of quarters. So what happens then? What happens if the CPI is negative? How does this apply?
Uh, we wouldn't use this strategy. We would only use it when the CPI was high. Otherwise, it has no effect. This is a one-time action that carries on forever on our levy limit adjustment. So in, in a case where the CPI was negative, we would just have to absorb the increase in the EMS budget through our regular levy limit that's already available. So we wouldn't, we wouldn't have the ability to even use this strategy.
That levy limit would be affected by the, a negative CPI, would it not?
No.
Oh, no, because that's just new construction.
That's, yeah, that's not new construction.
Gotcha.
All right, Dave?
Just for clarification, you know, anyone listening, though, it's not saying we're raising our levy, our levy by 9.7%. Just a portion from the EMS is going up by nine, and that's being added to our, to our levy limit. It's not a, we're not, we're not coming in at 9.7%.
Correct.
All right. Don't see any other questions or comments. So seeing nothing else, go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay? All right, that is approved. Anything else for EMS that you want to mention?
No.
All right. What about, oh, Joe's not here for Bike Committee, Free Advisory Committee?
One second. So we met on October 13. We discussed a couple of things. We didn't have anything in the agenda to approve any resolution. So we went through the budget. We, we talked about some of the amendments that I introduced to the budget. And then we discussed the three preservation ordinance update. And then on the committee of the whole meeting for January 2023, the, some of the three committee person, members, they are gonna give us an update about this ordinance that we are working on. So the, the idea is to finalize this ordinance next year. And then, what else did we do? And that's it.
All right. Thank you. Landmark Preservation, anything?
We haven't met.
All right. Housing Advisory, no, Joe, Healthy Neighborhoods?
We haven't met yet either, but we're having a meeting next week, I hope.
Ooh, exciting. All right. Then going on, Houston Committee, anything else on Finance? Randy, where did the motion?
No. Nothing else. Thank you.
All right. Personnel, anything?
No report.
All right. Public Safety, anything?
We're just seeing a slowdown. I, I think probably last party at a park, probably be this Saturday, or it's slowing down. We had one, one new operator's license, new operator's license at Liquor Town. That's it.
All right. No unfinished business. We still have one new item, business item left. It's a Public Works one. Dave, do you want to do number two?
I'll move approval ordinance 022-0-38, amending Chapter 68, Article 4, Division 2, parking prohibited within the town of Madison, attached, attachment area.
Second.
Sent by Jay, the Public Works approve?
Public Works has, has not seen this. They're asking us to, uh, our cursory review at our next meeting. They would like this to take place before, before the incorporation. So it has not come before the board yet.
Chad, do you want to speak to this?
Yeah, this is a direct referral. It, it looks to codify the current no parking areas that are posted within the town of Madison currently into city of Pittsburgh ordinances. And we're seeking action on this tonight, so that this ordinance would be in effect prior to the attachment on October 31st at midnight. It does not change any of the currently identified parking areas within the town of Madison at all. We actually sent some folks out last week to take a look at where all the signs were posted. And they completed the map that you'll, you have in the packet, that identifies where those signs are all currently posted and parking is restricted. So this simply codifies what's existing now into our ordinances. And then obviously, by acting on this tonight, it can be published and then ideally be effective on the 31st. And then the, the referral to Board of Public Works is obviously advisory, so the Board of Public Works is aware.
Questions at all? Comments? Seeing none, we go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay? All right, that is approved. Mayor's report, two quick things. One, the, like we've done, as long as I've been around anyway, the second meeting in December, we will cancel. That's, I think, December 27th. And so we typically cancel that because of the holidays, a lot of people out of town. So just so you know, that's on your calendar. And then one thing, also, if you didn't see it tomorrow, is the Chambers Business Luncheon. And there'll be an update on all things happening in the city, myself, well, I don't do much of the hardware stuff. Chad and Mike Z are gonna be giving the majority of the update there, but we're updating on all things, all things happening in the city, and including town of Madison, and anything else that might come up. So if you are there, we will see you there. Otherwise, I'm sure it'll be available online as well. And those are the only two things I think I have right now. So we can go do other reports, and we start with fourth today. Jim?
Sure. Not anything specifically to my district, but as an alder, I think, you know, we have to look at that 30,000-foot view of the city. So, you know, with the time on my hands, you know, I've just been thinking of, you know, the city of Pittsburgh being a young city, and, you know, being the man, retiring from management, always think, plan, do, check, act. So, you know, the city was planned, we did it. Then you check and you act. But, you know, I was thinking, have we ever did a check on ourselves, to evaluate ourselves, to see how are we doing as a city? And that led me to think about, should we be having a strategic plan? You know, because as I... You know, because as I talk to people and I ask employees, I ask, you know, people in the public, what's the city's mission, goals? You know, what's our vision for how do we want the city to be? There's other cities like Middleton, Sun Prairie, Oconomowalk, Oak Creek, and Janesville that all are in the process of a strategic plan, or they have a strategic plan. And so as I look at it, you know, I see that we have, you know, antiquated software systems that we are trying to correct. You know, we have staffing issues. When you look to the future, we're going to be running into where we're going to be bumping up to the levy. And, you know, we have to look at the future of our public safety and everything else like that. So as I look at it, and I don't know what everybody else thinks, but I just think it's time that we actually start looking at a strategic plan on, you know, what are the unified values of the city, the citizens? Not our own personal, what we think the city should be like, but what does the community actually think that the city should be like in the next five, 10, 15 years? So I'll just leave it at that, but I just thought I need to get it out there, because I have been, you know, talking to a lot of employees, going right along with the fire department, and talking to citizens, and I just think we just need to have some type of strategic direction, so.
Chad agrees with you, and I have talked about that as well, and I know it's one of the things that he wants to work on as well, those types of things. Do you want to speak to it further?
Well, it could be something, yeah, I mean, it could be something that the council may want to consider with one-time funding and an upcoming tid closure potentially. So that may be something that the council would like to consider, we can add to that list.
All right. Hey, you, Randy?
You know, other than the comments, I'll second that, so.
All right. Dave?
Let's see, we had, we closed out our garden, we had our cleanup day last week. We almost, we almost doubled it from last year to this year. We're hoping to, we don't have that much room to grow, but we're hoping to grow again next year, so if you know people in the area. Second, just a reminder to everyone, with our waterways, one of the biggest things you can do is keep the leaves out of the, out of the streets. Actually, now you look, every curb is full of leaves. You know, take, take the responsibility, you know, rake them up and get them out of the, get them out of the curb so they're not going down, going down the drain. Consider adopting the drain in front of your house so that we're not plugging up those, plugging up those and flooding intersections, and that goes, that goes for the winter, too. You can get similar, similar things. Last, we had a, I mentioned to some of you, there was a stolen, stolen car we found right across the street from our house. It was left running with the lights on and no driver in it on Sunday, and wanted to thank the police for very, very quick response and getting it towed away. And second, please pass my thanks on to the parks for the, starting the process of taking down the fence in Eagle Park. It looks like they're about halfway done, so please pass my thanks on to them.
All right. Thank you. Julia?
I don't have any report. The only thing that, something happened in our district on Post Drive, what was, yesterday?
Yep.
But, you know, Chief Morale was very helpful and informed us of what's, what's going on in our district, so I appreciate that, that he called us and told us what was going on, so, so we have an idea, but, so, that's it.
All right. Thanks, Gabriela.
Just one thing, I was able to attend the Growing Sustainable Communities Conference on October 17 and 18 with our sustainability specialist, Phil Groupi, down in Dubuque Highway. They've been on hiatus for a couple of years because of the pandemic, but it's restarting. It's an annual conference, and it's been going on for many, many years, and it brings people from all over the Midwest mostly, but also people from all over the country. So it's people that care about all these issues, it's great sessions. It was a really, really interesting, got to meet a lot of other people working in similar-sized cities and Midwestern cities on sustainability issues. Really a lot to think about in the lead up to when we finally roll out the sustainability plan process, so it was really great, and I hope to be bringing, I'm just trying to digest all the information, I'd love to bring some ideas to everyone and maybe walk you through some things in the future, but it was a great opportunity, and thanks for, for letting us, thanks to the taxpayers for letting us do some, some of these conferences, because I think it's a great way to bring some new ideas to the city and bring some outside perspectives. So I was really grateful that I was able to go. Thanks.
All right. Thanks, Jay.
Yeah, so I got a bunch of things. We had the QuickTrip's open and running, and people are using it quite a bit. I see cars there fairly frequently. Even if I stop in there, since it's fairly close to my house, if I stop in there at 8:30 or 9 o'clock at night, there's usually other customers in there, so people are taking advantage of it. I'm sure they'll get a lot more business once the Sayen Road construction gets done. But it is not without its drawbacks. There are, I've gotten a couple of emails from residents at nearby apartment buildings who are complaining about the parking lot lights. And I have, I have made an effort to, to explain that it's, that it's undoubtedly due to our ordinances about minimal parking lot lighting, and that, you know, they, that's just, it's just simply a part of urban environment, and many people feel that when they, when they moved in and it wasn't there, that's how it should always be. So it's the same kind of development issues that we get anywhere. New things happen, things change, and people are unhappy with it, and it's unfortunate, but, I mean, you know, you can only do so much. So, but this is, there's also been issues with Sayen Road Construction, Swan Creek. A number of residents have messaged me about people tearing through Swan Creek like there's no tomorrow. And there's actually a resident there who has his own speed monitoring equipment, which will take pictures of the cars and the license plates, and so he's, he's been sending some of that data to the police department. So the police department and Public Works are working with the neighborhood. That, that project is only going to be going on for about another month, so it will probably, there's probably not a lot that's going to really change, but we're doing some things to help with that. And then we had the, many of you are aware that we had the gunshots that hit houses in Swan Creek. And as far as I know, we don't, we don't have any idea where those shots were coming from. We have a general idea that they were coming from north of Swan Creek because all the houses were hit on the north side. But, and, and we, we know that these were not hunting implements that were used, but that's really all we know. That's all that's been released at this point. There was a neighborhood meeting that was, that was basically arranged by one of the residents of Swan Creek, and it was, it was a good meeting. There were about 25 or so people there, maybe 30 people. The mayor was there, a couple of other alders were there. And I thought that we had some good information. There was a representative from the DNR who was there to present information about what's actually allowed on the property, and I think people got a lot of questions answered, but I think people are still a little concerned. So at that meeting, I asked the police chief that when an incident like that happens, as the elected representative of that district, I should get a phone call, which didn't happen. And in fact, I didn't even know this incident had happened until three days later, when I got an email from a resident that asked me what the city was going to do about it. And I'm like, do about what? Because I don't, I don't know what's going, I don't have any idea. So I asked the police chief if we could make sure that happened, and he then decided to tell me that I should have set up a one-on-one meeting with him previously so that we could get a better relationship going on, which may or may not be true, but it's not really relevant to the request that I made. Sure enough, on Saturday, the following Saturday, there was another incident with gunshots where the city showed up with its drones and things and were taking a survey, and I got no communication from the police department at all. So I don't really understand what's going on, but I know that in nearly 20 years of my involvement in city government prior to this, if something like this would have happened in my district, I would have gotten a call either from the police chief, the fire chief, whoever. I don't understand why there's resistance to doing this now, but something needs to change, because it is not acceptable that, that major incidents like this are happening and, and the elected representatives are not being contacted. And other than that, I don't have anything else.
All right. Shane?
I think Jay said it all.
All right.
So no further comment.
All right. Maybe, yeah, yeah. What's your question?
So I will recommend you, Jay, because, you know, I have a communication with the chief, and I told him that if there is something happening in my district, you know what I mean, because in the past, used to have that, that, you know, something happened in the district, and I, I knew because of the news or Facebook. So I reached out to him and I say, if something happened in my district, that is something major, you know, nothing, you know, like something big happened, I would like to know. And he has been very good with me, I don't know, Gabriela, he communicated with you, to inform us about what is going on in the district. So maybe you need to ask him and say, if something happened, I will be, you know...
I did ask him that at that Wednesday meeting.
All right. Let's not, yeah. Let's not devolve into, I think, all right, that was, all right, well, we can do that later. All right. Two quick things before we leave. One, since we are meeting next week, we did move that up, and it's only a week different, and it could be a longer meeting. I did ask to not have Mayor Report and Alder Reports on the agenda next week, just because it's only a week. But if there are things that come up, please let Chad know, we'll still have an administrator's report, and he can announce anything that you might have, so let him know. And then we are, next week, going to still start at 7:30. We, we don't think that it'll be a super late meeting with the amendments that are proposed, that's our hope anyway, so we're just going to still meet at the same time next week. However, tomorrow night, for Community of the Whole, we do meet at 6 o'clock, and that is earlier than typical Community of the Whole. So just don't show up an hour late, and just wanted to make sure to mention that. We're talking about all the amendments, and that is all I have. So is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Who by Jay?
Second.
Sent by Randy. All in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay? We are adjourned.